Councilmember items for A, Willtown Improvement Organization Funding.
Move.
Mr. Pryor seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. All in favor say, is there any discussion?
Do we have a number on that?
Twenty-five thousand.
That's enough?
Yes, sir. That will give us a match for seventy-five thousand they'll receive from the USDA.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to disband the Finance Committee and turn over to Vice Chairman Honeycutt for the Public Safety Committee.
Good afternoon. This is the meeting of our Public Safety Committee made up of myself, Mr. Boykin, Mr. Darby, Mr. Middleton, and the chair sits on all committees. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved and properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any... Motion carries. We have a presentation for item two A.
Excuse me, one second, I'm trying to find the... We already got it up. All right. I appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen of County Council, I appreciate the time and opportunity to be able to speak to you and give y'all an update. The last time I was up here was when COVID was pretty hard and heavy, so I'm very blessed that we're not having to come up and speak about any COVID-related issues, so... But, um... So what I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of give y'all an idea of some of the new things that we have within our department that are helping our community. So with this one, it's our daily operations brief that we came up with. So we're uploading different types of information to a PowerPoint slide, and then we send it out Monday through Friday to all of our municipalities, our state partners and our federal partners, and the nonprofits that we work with. So it's got everything from, if we have a big event that's coming up during the course of the month or within the next week or so, we'll put that up. And that's everything from some of the presidential movements whenever they come in town, also tropical updates and graphics for about different tropical and hurricane storms. And then also within it, it gives the posture of our EOC, so you'll be able to understand what we're doing and when. So if we have a big storm coming in the next two or three days, we'll either move from Operation Three to OpCon Two to OpCon One. So we'll go down as the risk gets higher. So it gives us a chance to be able to give that information out as well. One of the things that we pride ourselves is trying to share as much information with our partners as possible. We also allow them to sit on the state South Carolina Emergency Management Call as well. And then we also have other things in other different times of the year, whether it's training that we re-host in our EOC, winter weather, so if we have to open up warming centers, we provide information on those, which church that they'll be located at and what their capacities are. And then also, we talk about, we haven't had to do it in quite a while, since 2018, but the ice and snow, whenever we had that, we had a conference call real early with our DOT Highway Patrol and then plus Public Works, which they do heavy lifting pretty much as much as DOT does. And then also with the municipalities to see what equipment they have that's up and going, and they'll be able to clean up the major first and second priority roads. And then we also put up information about the weekly conference calls with national weather. We do one on Monday and one on Friday, and we upload those on there as well. So hurricane forecasts, I know they're saying all gloom and doom. It just takes one. I see that right now Colorado State is predicting twenty-three storms, and then AccuWeather's doing twenty to twenty-five. Next Thursday, the National Hurricane Center will release theirs. They usually do it a little bit later, closer to hurricane season, which is June 1st to November 30th. And with that, we just need to make sure that everybody is understanding that this is just models. So you can't put too much faith in it, but it kind of gives everybody an idea. Everything is increasing as far as the number of storms, the number of days that we have a storm in the Atlantic. It's just, it's getting to the point where we're having one a year, at least. I know the last few years have been a little bit lighter, but from 2015 to about 2019, we had some serious storms that we're looking at, that was coming up, the Gulf Stream. So a lot of this is, just to provide you with a little bit, they've got the national average on one side and then the new forecast on the left. This is probably the most important thing that we have to talk about. This is an update to the evacuation zones. With this evacuation, our evacuation was Zone A, which was down south, B, which was the peninsula up through Lincolnville, and then C, which is Mount Pleasant, all the way up past McClellanville. So by that, the time that they made that judgment call was to do it based on geography. If we had one that was coming up the middle of the coast, one that was going to impact more down south, or one up north, that's why they did it. And didn't really want to take that much time to be able to try and look at every road of where everybody's evacuated. So the news zones, so the barrier islands are Zone A, which is really important because if we have a small storm that doesn't look like it's going to impact the entire county, we can call for that to be evacuated first. And then B is the yellow, and that's more impacted by the creeks and rivers and the harbor. And then B is further inland, or C is further inland of everything down south, up to Hyde Park Road, up to Lincolnville, and then further up all the way to the South San T River. So it really gives us a chance to make a decision based on threat instead of having to base it on geography. I think it's going to be much safer for our citizens. We worked with the state on this hand in hand, and we were able to make the corrections that we wanted. But they were a big help with the planning of this and also with a lot of the public information that we're going to be using to get this out to our media. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring to your attention and say thank you is the Critical Incident Support Team. This was made last year after, or the concept came up last year after the shooting on Isla Palms. So what we ran into when we were there is, it was chaos when we got there. And I think with us coming in with the Unified Mobile Command Unit, having those types of assets to come in, and for the FBI and the SLED and the other police departments to be able to come in and have, all they had to do was sit down and basically just type in the Wi-Fi password, and that was it. And they were up and running, and they were really able to coordinate amongst themselves. So when we brought that to the table, it was another step that we could do, which is the Critical Incident Support Team. So it's very similar to the Instant Management Team. It was a class that y'all funded, and within that, we've been able to pull in specialized training for that, plus five days for the county employees to take off for that class. A lot of them have gone on and taken other different classes for Instant Commander, the PIO, Liaison Officer, Finance Section Chief, Planning Section Chief, Logistics Section Chief. So they were really able to be able to come back and take more classes and bring that knowledge to the team. So it's made up of two members from City of Charleston Fire, Charleston County Public Safety. Peggy Rose does a lot of our community engagement, so she was able to help out with it. We have a bunch from EMS, every member of my team on emergency management, the Radio Shop, there's all of their members, Aldo McClellanville Fire, it's every one of their captains in hire, and then also with any of those that can drive the UMC. So it's really important that we're able to do this. And what it does is it allows the smaller communities that have never heard of the word ICS or NIMS possibly. And so what we're able to do is we're able to come in, we don't take command or control of the event, but we're able to be able to give them additional resources. There's a lot of stuff that, we're very, very blessed. We're resource-heavy here in Charleston County. And with that, we are able to bring a lot of tools and equipment to the scene and be able to help them out. I can't tell you how many times that I've received thank you from Isla Palms. They were extremely grateful. But this is one of the newest projects that we're under, and so it's going well. We've been at the Blue Crab Festival, the Kewa Marathon, and Triathlon, both of those since we've built the team together. But really appreciate everybody's time. Is there anything that I can answer for you?
The committee, are there any questions? Anybody? No. Thank you so much, Mr. Coats. We appreciate your presentation. We appreciate all you do for emergency management. That said, I'd like to request unanimous consent to add an item to the agenda to name the Charleston County Emergency Operations Center. Hearing no objections, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Mr. Boykin?
Madam Chair, with a measurable gratitude and deep appreciation, I move to name the Charleston County Emergency Operations Center, the Joe Coats Operations Center.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Noes? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Congratulations. At this time, I'll adjourn our Public Safety Committee meeting and turn it over to the chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. I'm going to call a special county council meeting to order. First item, Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting and agenda were posted and distributed to news media.
Wait a minute, girl.
Persons requesting notification.
Stop. Stop.
Please stop. Yeah. Please stop. Don't leave yet.
Two minutes. Sorry, Kristin.
Good call.
Good job, Bill.
I finished reading it, so it's back over to you.
Okay. All right, great. All right. Finance Committee Recommendations, two A, Willtown Improvement.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Opposed? None? Thank you. I would like to request unanimous consent to add the naming of the EOC to this agenda.
Move. Second.
All in favor, do I hear a motion? We do so? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. Would you, I'd like to...
All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Can I read the recommend?
Yep.
First, I'd like to make a motion for committee recommendation.
Do we need a...
Yeah, we got a vote on this one.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
I'm going to read the resolution honoring Joe Coats. Whereas Charleston County Council recognizes that the foundation of our community is grounded in those who give of themselves selflessly to help others, and from time to time has the privilege of recognizing an individual who exemplifies such commitment. Whereas Joe Coats is a native of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, a graduate of Wyandotte High School, and an alumnus of the American Military University, from which he obtained a bachelor's degree in Emergency and Disaster Management, and a master's degree in Public Administration with a focus on emergency management. And whereas Joe Coats has been employed by Charleston County Government since June 2008, serving in various progressively responsible positions in the Revenue Collections Department and Emergency Management Department. Whereas Joe Coats was promoted after competing for the position in a national search to Charleston County Emergency Management Director in January 2022. And whereas, under the leadership of Joe Coats, Charleston County is the only county in this state of South Carolina to have received the coveted Emergency Management Accreditation Program accreditation, and was reaccredited this year. And whereas professionally, Joe Coats has been a coordinator of the Sheriff's Rural Search and Rescue Team, former Secretary for the Disaster Recovery Network after the 1,000 Year Flood in 2015, former SUAS Drone Chairman under the Public Safety Coordinating Committee, Time Unit Leader and Planning Section Chief under the Low Country Incident Management Team, South Carolina Emergency Management Association Legislative Delegation Member, and sits as an Advisory Board Member for the Citadel's James B. Muir Center for Climate Studies. And whereas Joe Coats is active in his community, an Eagle Scout himself, he has served as Scout Master for Boy Scout Troop 519, an elder and deacon at Mount Pleasant Presbyterian Church, and is affiliated with the Theta Commission at the Citadel and the PD Alumni Association of Kappa Alpha Order. Now therefore be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby find that Joe Coats, having served as an employee of Charleston County Government, being a person of exemplary reputation, and having worked at the Charleston County Emergency Management Operations Center, meets all of the criteria to make it appropriate and warranted for this body to declare that the Charleston County Emergency Operations Center shall henceforth be named the Joe Coats Emergency Operations Center. Now therefore be it further resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby commend Joe Coats for outstanding service to his community, and that the genuine appreciation of Charleston County Council be extended to him on behalf of all the citizens of this county, Charleston County Council, Herbert Sasse Chairman.
I'm very shocked and surprised to see you here. But what I do want to say is thank you to my team. Without the team that I have right now, we couldn't have done what we've done in a short period of time since I've been the director. We're moving in the right direction, more correct pace, and more human and security-minded. So we greatly appreciate all of them, and then also for the other people in the region, the support that we get from all the municipalities, and all thanks to the county citizens that take their time away from their families and volunteer in the EOC. We definitely couldn't do it without of y'all. Charleston County is, I believe, one of the top counties in the state, so...
One of them.
But yeah, I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
We have cake and refreshments for y'all downstairs in the cafeteria, so now y'all can go. We're going to have a five-minute break. We'll have a five-minute break. When they leave, we'll start back over.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I don't know what I was thinking. Thank you.
We don't have a long agenda.
Thanks for coming. That was perfect. That was perfect.
Got some concerns, but you know.
County Council meeting, and I'm gonna turn over to Ms. Honeycutt for our special housing committee.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the special housing committee made up of myself, Reverend Middleton, Mr. Kibrowski, Mr. Werman, and again, the chairman sits on all committees. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes of February 8th?
To approve.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We have a presentation for the Housing Our Future Quarterly Update. Ms. Smalls?
Good afternoon, council. I also thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk about the amazing work that we're doing in community development and revitalization. I am here today to provide an update on the county's affordable housing programs for the first quarter of 2024, and I'm also going to throw in a little information about the finances and where we stand with the ARPA funding. The ARPA-funded programs that I will discuss today include the Critical Home Repair Program, Charleston Homes Gap Financing, Wells Septic Tank and Public Utilities Connection Program. And following my presentation, Erica Davis is in the audience, and he will give you an update on the land acquisition program. We were previously calling it the Land Banking Program, but it is still the same program. The county is on target. Mr. Pryor, you've asked several times. We are definitely on target to meet the obligations and spend all of the ARPA funding by 2026.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So today, in addition to the programmatic update, I'm gonna provide a glimpse into the finances. Not too much, but as I go through different boards today, I do want to give you some definitions. The first one is budget. We all know that that's the money that you set aside for a particular program. Your allocation, the allocated amount, is what council allocated to nonprofits and developers. Obligated is a legal instrument where we have formed a partnership with the organization. The last two terms are the most important. You have obligated. We have to have funds obligated by December 31st, 2024, and that means we have entered into a contract with them. The second term, of course, is expended. We must expend all of the funds by December 31st, 2026. The first program we will talk about tonight is our Gap Financing Program. I'm sure you all remember that Gap Financing was a way to provide funding to the developers to fill in the gap for providing affordable housing to the community. As you look at the graph here, you can see that you allocate or you budgeted $20 million to the program. So far, we've allocated $14.2 million, and we have obligated and expended $6.8 million. The important thing to note with this is that of the $5.8 million that's remaining, we started a process, an application process, last month, and I will hopefully be in front of you in June to provide the final allocations for those programs. Looking at the good news, the first residents are expected to move into the Archer Apartments in June. They were hoping to move in a little earlier, but they had a few glitches here and there. But June 1st, she said they should start moving individuals in. The Northbridge Town Homes, we have started working with them on certifying their residence, their applications, so they're moving forward to moving in applicants, also new residents. And finally, with the Esau Jenkins Project, I just wanted to show you a picture for those of you that were there earlier this year. Of course, we broke ground in, I think it was February. They have started construction on the site. They're putting in the pipes, infrastructure, and that type of work on the Esau Jones Project. I wanted to tell you the good news about this final phase, Phase 3 with the Gap Funding. Let me go backwards, actually. I apologize. The final phase with Gap Financing. We received more applications in the Phase 3 than we did in all of the other two remaining phases. And of course, they asked for more funding, and we laugh about it because we only have $5.8 million. But what's good to hear about this increase, this uptake in applications, is we now have a base, a foundation. It's a great segue into our other programs that we will hopefully implement later this year, the accommodations program and the fee in lieu of taxes. So having this many applications, although it's a little discouraging because we won't be able to fund as many this go around, but it's also encouraging because it's getting out into the community that we have funds available to assist with filling the gaps so we can provide more affordable housing. I wanted to remind you that in Phase 1, there were approximately 300 units that you provided. In Phase 2, there were about 136 units that you provided. So total, Charleston County can be proud to say that we have helped produce up to 500, close to 500, new units of affordable housing in Charleston County. Charleston Homes Project. As you remember, this is where you purchased the property from the Charleston Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and we wanted to keep the homes affordable for 99 years. This is a smaller graph, or it doesn't have as many numbers on it because you allocated $2.5 million, and we purchased the homes for $2.5 million. So this program, we have completed the obligation here, but the program will continue until we allocate or award the 16 homes to nonprofits and other organizations. The wonderful thing is with Phase 1 and Phase 2, we learned some things to make Phase 3 better. So there have been, there's been an uptick in applications for this program also. So I'm hoping to get, to be able to allocate the seven homes during Phase 3, the phase we're currently in. The small tweak we did to the program is before we were trying to do the homes at an AMI of 30% to 50%, but we realized that many people needed it a little higher. That 30% to 50% works really well for multifamily homes, but when you're dealing with a single-family home, the 80% and below will work better. And so we noticed more applications, so we know that that was the right decision to make on that one. And I hope to do the final Phase 4 in the fall of this year. Critical Home Repair. As you remember, that's where you allocated $4 million to assist with repairing homes for senior citizens so that they would have a safe and secure place to live. We have $1 million remaining that we need to obligate. We will do the procurement process starting in June of this year so that we can get moving with the remaining funds. We've spent half of the funds, so we have about $2 million left to spend by the end of 2026. The other thing that I'm doing in this program is the senior citizens applied for this program in June and through October of 2022, so they've been waiting. I'm trying to determine ways, I'm researching ways to expedite and speed up this process so we can hopefully spend the remaining funds by the end of the year. I don't want the senior citizens waiting much longer. So we are looking at different approaches to take so we can speed this process up for the Critical Home Repair Program. The final program we have for you is the Wells Septic Tank and Utility Connection Program, and that's where we either replace or repair wells and septic tanks, or we connect residents to public utilities. There was $5.5 million that you allocated for this program. We have obligated $4.5 million, as you remember, may remember. $4 million is for infrastructure. Mount Pleasant Water Works will install the infrastructure in the Snouton Community. The remaining $500,000 is for us to do public utility connections for citizens in the entire Mount Pleasant area. And that left the $1 million, and that program, that funding was allocated to replace wells and septic tanks in all of Charleston County. As of today, we have about $500,000 left of the $1 million, and I'll talk to you a little bit later about what I would like to do with some of those funds. Last week, there was some discussion about Snouton, so I wanted to give you an update on the Snouton projects that are going on with Snouton and the funding. I told you that the allocation is $4 million for the Mount Pleasant infrastructure. They have submitted the plans to the county for review. The county anticipates approving them sometime this week, sometime this month. I think the most important thing to take from this is that initially, they said that they would start the project in October of 2024, but they're a little ahead of schedule. So we're anticipating construction to begin in July or August. So I think that's really good news for the Snouton community. If we look at the sewer connections, the tap, that wasn't just for Snouton, but the ones that we have completed so far were six connections in Snouton. There were about 15 that we could connect, and about six of them decided to move forward with the program. I met with Mount Pleasant Water Works earlier this week, and we talked a little bit about partnering a little bit more so we can go into the community and talk about this service. I did a lot of work in the beginning in Snouton, so now we need to pick it up a little bit and speak to all of the residents in Mount Pleasant to let them know that there is, that we have funding available for low- to moderate-income individuals that want to connect to public utilities in Snouton. I think we're gonna start seeing some increase once we start doing more education in the That takes us to my request for council. Mr. Dickerson is here today. Mr. Dickerson and I met, I think it was early November, it was right before December, it was right before Christmas, right before we went into the holidays. We met with, I met with Mr. Dickerson and a representative from the North Charleston Sewer District, and we talked because Mr. Dickerson, Mayor Dickerson, was interested in increasing public utilities in the Lincolnville area. So I told them about the Mount Pleasant program, and we came up with a program that's similar to the Mount Pleasant program. What we're, I will be requesting tonight in the Finance Committee meeting is $600,000 of the ARPA funding. I will be able to move it from the money that's remaining, the $1 million that's remaining for the well and septic tank replacement program. We can take $300,000 from there. Mac has graciously offered to give me $300,000. I'm sorry, I meant to say $300,000. But Mac has graciously agreed to give me $300,000 from the lost revenue, the benefits of working for him, I guess. But we use $300,000 from the lost revenue fund, and that will give us the $600,000 for this program. The way this program will work, it's slightly different than the Mount Pleasant program. They will use $500,000 for infrastructure, and then $100,000 we will use to help connect citizens to the infrastructure. The only other difference with this particular program, or the nuance with this particular program, is the North Charleston Sewer District agreed to do the work for us. They're going to get the homes connected and then bill us for that. They will pay for a portion of the connections, and we will pay for a portion of the connection. So that's like a win for me, at least.
It's nice to have a water system that works with you.
Yes. It's been a really great relationship, and I don't know if Mr. Mayor Dickerson wanted to say anything or...
First of all, I want to thank council and Luella. We've been talking with each other almost on a weekly basis. Jared Jones from North Charleston Sewer has agreed to work with us in providing state revolving fund money of close to $1.5 million. I hope I'm not speaking prematurely, but we talked the other day, and hopefully that will come through. The rest of the money will be for connecting approximately 27 people that are still on separate tanks. We discovered that about four people already had sewer that ran directly by their homes, and we hopefully, we could connect them right away. But thank you for the funds. It's proof that we can move forward, practically eliminating separate tanks in town Lincolnville. With all the other developments going on, we're moving forward with sewer and water system that will take us years to come. Thank you for everything, and I thank you, Luella, and her team, all that you have done with the town Lincolnville and all the council members. Thank you as well. Thank you.
During the Finance Committee meeting, there are two agenda items. The first one is to, a request to approve the names of the organizations. Earlier, we had the project names or a street address, but in order to meet the transparency requirements of the state, we have to list the actual developers or nonprofits or the organizations that are going to receive the funding. So this isn't a change in funding. The only change is we've added the names. And then, of course, the second request during the Finance Committee meeting will be the approval of the $600,000 for the Lincolnville Gravity Sewer Project. Are there any questions before I turn it over to Eric?
Members of the committee, any questions on the housing update? Yes, Mr. Werman.
I'm Chairwoman, and thank you, Ms. Smalls. I just wanted to ask, and I don't remember if it's just the 5.8, or maybe the supplies to some of the other ARPA funds, but I know that we switched to where we were gonna try and start doing revolving, well, not revolving. We were just gonna try and start doing loans, obviously below-market loans, but given, it sounds like there's some competition for the funds that we've got available. It sounds like, I mean, I just know that interest rates are higher, hoping that that's looking more and more possible. I think my understanding is we wouldn't know, those agreements wouldn't have been entered into by now, but is that, can you give us any update on that, whether that's looking like it's gonna come to fruition, or?
Yes, sir. So the first loan that we did in the pilot program was with Esau Jenkins, and we did complete that one, and they, of course, started the work. So that's the first of the revolving loans. In Phase 3, excuse me, in Phase 3, we are doing up to $2 million as a revolving loan, and 500 and below will be a regular grant, and those are for smaller projects. So yes, in Phase 2 and 3, we have some of the loan programs starting. So the revolving loan pilot program is moving along well. And I agree with you. I've heard one person told me that they're looking at 7.5% eventually, so I think that also probably resulted in the increase.
I mean, it seems like the time to try and, try and, you know, push on that for sure right now to, you know, obviously, we want as many sources moving forward. So I congratulate you all on all the progress we've made. I'm excited to hear about it, and thank you for the updating information.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Moody?
I don't, committee, thank you, Ms. Honeycutt. I wanted to see if you could check my arithmetic, Ms. Smalls. When I saw this deck, I get $25 million as spent or committed with about $14 million of that to, now you say 500 new units, all affordable housing?
Yes, sir.
And for home repair, to keep citizens in their affordable homes, which is critical because if people are losing their homes, you're working backwards. Another 4.2 trust revolving loan fund that I think Mr. Werman was talking about, another $2.5 million to secure land, that adds up to $25 million. And then another $40 million in rental assistance. Is that correct? Does that sound correct?
Not the 40 million in rental assistance. Yes, sir. What's the 40 million?
Well, assistance. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, you, it was previously, yes.
So if I total those two, $65 million? We have people come in here, yell at us, wear t-shirts, and tell us we're not doing squat for housing. Wave posters. I mean, people, people yell, but our people do. This council does, and I'm proud of that. That's, those are staggering numbers. So thank you for your support and your teamwork here. Thank you, Ms. Honeycutt.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Smalls. We appreciate all you've done. Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, council. I'll be brief. Just a quick update on the land acquisition grant program, which is a pilot program, as you know. Back in February, you allocated 2.5 million for grants for this program. Just last month, we contracted with Charleston Redevelopment Corporation to assist with developing and operating this program. We're currently in the process of finalizing the program details. The CRC, including the processes, will follow, criteria, applications, scoring rubric, and required submittals. Next month, we'll be working with the provider for community development's online application system to get that up and running, hopefully by July. We'll launch that request for applications. It'll be a very quick turnaround. We expect it to be open for about a month, take about a month to review those and make recommendations to county council so that you can consider those in September, well ahead of our December deadline for obligation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the committee or council? Yes, Mr. Werman.
I'm gonna ask a similar question. I realize it's entitled the grant program, and listen, I mean, I think we've had an iterative process in various phases where we've improved some of the other programs we've been working on, so I'm not saying this as like a, you know, thing that we need to push forward necessarily, but I am interested if there's an opportunity to do something similar where instead of grants, we're talking about money that revolves in and out of a program, or, you know, maybe sometime in the future, some centralized program on the land acquisition side in addition to the construction funding side that we're already doing. That may not be how y'all are, have, you know, per the directive of council, that may not be how y'all have drawn it up, but I am curious whether that's in the mix or something y'all could look towards, you know, the next phase of piloting?
You're correct. We've been focused on the grants to this point, as that was what was in the directive, but we can certainly work with our partner on that to see what opportunities may be there.
Well, I appreciate it, and I'm just interested in, you know, trying, we've had an opportunity with ARPA, and we have an opportunity, at least for six years, with the ATAX, but I'm trying to see what we can do now to build something that is more internally sustainable. So that's, and there's gonna be trade-offs, as everyone knows, you know, you probably can't get as deep affordability or maybe as many units if you require some level of payback, but, you know, I do know that that's a strategy that's used in other places to have, you know, a revolving fund, or revolving funds in some way, shape, or form that is done at least at a below-market interest rate. And so, you know, to whatever extent we can get that and have it be useful, I'd like this council and I'd like our folks to kind of keep that in mind, because we don't have any guarantee of any, you know, state funding or state allowable funding under the ATAX rule past 2030, I think. So just something to put into the ether.
We'll flesh that out with CRC.
Any other comments or questions?
I did want to just throw this out there, Mr. Davis. Along those lines, I have been approached, and I know there's been some discussion in some of the other trade organizations of private equity funding for these types of things, specific pots of money that will be allocated, their uses, the reasons this money is being raised is for matching in capital stacks in this type of investment. So it's kind of an investment tool. We've even been approached about, you know, being a partner with some of these. So as we, as these discussions evolve and we look at sort of the scoring and the criteria we're gonna use, whenever a project comes with that type of match from a private equity or, you know, private-public partnership match, I think we should also consider that, especially if it involves, you know, being able to get some of that money back in a revolving way. But in any event, I thank you so much for developing this, the creativity and the implementation of this team has been absolutely phenomenal over the last few years, and we appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would adjourn the special housing meeting.
All right. Our environmental management and planning public works, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Sasse. Committee composed of myself, Mr. Kibrowski, Mr. Pryor, Mr. Werman, and Chairman Sasse. Mr. Thigpen is going to give us a couple of updates, but first I'll ask for action on item number one.
Will for approval.
Pryor? Seconded?
Second.
Any corrections, additions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Thigpen, item number two.
Thank you, Chairman Moody and the council. We've had a number of complaints from the surrounding communities regarding the Bee's Ferry landfill, and these have been, I'm sorry. So I've, okay, that's not working. So I've, on April 29th of this year, we had held a meeting with the Grand Bee's community at the West Ashley Library. There have been a number of complaints over odor in this area, and they, those complaints were lodged with DEHAC. DEHAC gave a very comprehensive presentation at that meeting, and I've included a couple of their slides in this presentation, and I believe y'all have, should have the full copy of the DEHAC presentation from that day. But basically, the complaint started in early 23. In January, DEHAC met with citizens, and they opened up what they called an odor investigation. As part of that investigation, they determined when would be the best time to test for odors in that area. And DEHAC, based on the odor complaints, DEHAC looked specifically at health hazards in the area of the landfill to make sure the smells weren't causing health issues because there had been some complaints of respiratory irritation in the area. So DEHAC looked at time of day, they looked at temperature, they looked at wind direction, all to be able to tell when and how to test air samples in the area. So the landfill itself has nine gas methane monitoring wells, and those are wells that we're required to have by DEHAC regs. We're required to test them at a set frequency, and we, all during 2023 and '24, there were no exceedance of what they call the lower levels. So we weren't even close to being, violating any rules and regs for methane. So as part of DEHAC's investigation, they contacted the developer of Grand Bee's, and they investigated what was originally considered a passive gas excavation, per se. But when DEHAC visited the site, they found nine methane monitoring wells on the development, the property line between the development and the landfill that no one really knew about. So they, while part of this investigation, they did, and I apologize, there were 16 wells they found along Grand Bee's. And this is the location of those wells. They were concentrated in areas where residents were closest to the landfill, and these wells were tested by DEHAC, and no contaminants were found out of these wells. They did have one well that they're still looking at. When they stuck a probe into the well, it struck some kind of level, but the air outside of the well was not, you know, didn't, the machine didn't activate on the smell outside of just that. outside of just that concentrated well pipe. And no, none of the target compounds that DEHAC looked at had more than a 2% of the maximum allowable air concentration. So the parts per billion, parts per million, none of those were exceeded, or even came close to being exceeded. And this is a, there are some of their testing results. I'm not a chemist, but I'm not about to try to pronounce some of these terminologies, but none of them, out of the twenty or so chemicals or gases they looked for, did they find. So they basically don't believe that, there is a consensus that there is some smell emanating in that Bees Ferry area, Bees Ferry Road area. Some of the citizens said they could smell it really high down around the Harris Teeter, which is way away from the Bees Ferry landfill. Some of the residents stated they could smell it when they walked by the detention ponds in Grand Bees. But there's been no way, there's been no connection between the Bees Ferry landfill and the smells that we, that they're exceeding, or they're experiencing.
Thank you very much. The sixteen wells that nobody ever knew about, who, who built those wells?
I think the consensus is that the developer put them in, or a previous landowner put them in, but...
Attempt to find out who put the sixteen wells in, and was there any consequences for the developers who did it?
I don't know if DEHAC did anything with the developer on finding out who actually installed them.
Do you think we should try to find that out?
No, sir, we, they're fine, where they're, I mean, they're not causing any harm or damage to Charleston County, and we have our own wells to test, so we wouldn't go back and test them, and it gives DEHAC more confirmation that the odors, the, the gas is not coming from landfill.
Did we ask DEHAC if those were violations of DEHAC rules and regulations?
I personally did not, sir.
Thank you.
Questions before he continues? Okay. I did have a quick question, I, I would just, from the vision, visual, maybe Mr. Evans, that's all City of Charleston? How, I was stunned at how close those houses are to a fifty-year-old landfill. But why in the world would the City of Charleston permit those houses to go right up to the landfill? Not a question, just wow.
Yes, sir. So, some of the other things we heard from the residents were about the, our migratory birds. There is a large population of birds that visit the landfill every winter. The landfill is warm, that is attractive to birds. The birds sometimes will pick up remnants of food and carry that outside the limits of the landfill to, to partake of their finds. We have purchased two bird buffers in the area. It is a, it's a trailer-mounted mister, giant mister, that uses a grape extract liquid. What it does, it's supposed to irritate the bird's beak to keep the bird away from whatever area you're trying to protect. And we have located those two bird buffers adjacent to that property line where it joins with that residential area to try to keep those birds in the landfill. Now, one of the other things that we are doing, will do this coming winter, we have contracted with a falconer. He will bring his falcons to the landfill, and he will use those falcons to encourage the birds to go somewhere else. And it's apparently very, very interesting to watch, as soon as he launches a falconer, the birds take off. If a falcon hits there, they just take off. And so he's trained his falcon, falcons to kind of corral the birds on, back into the, more of the swampy areas away from the landfill.
What does it do to irritate the beaks?
It is just, it's a ecologically friendly process that's used all over the, the country to try to keep birds off of landfills, so it just makes it kind of, it kind of irritates or almost like a, I guess grape extract is like pepper spray to us to, like, for a bird. Yes, sir. That's all I have about the landfill, unless someone else has any questions.
Committee members, council members, all right?
Okay.
Next.
So the other thing I wanted to talk about tonight is our allocations.
Before you start with that, let's just take a minute and explain to council about the allocation system, why it was done, and, and you remember Mrs. Hamm handled a lot of these negotiate, no, not negotiations, you were telling the municipalities and everybody what was going on, but let's explain to council so we've got a working idea about what these allocations are and why they were put in place.
All right, so the allocations, council passed, I guess, an objective to reduce the amount of waste going into landfill by 50%, I believe. And a part of that, in transferring that waste outside of Charleston County, a certain percentage of waste needed to go to a transfer station so it could be trucked outside of the county to, I think, most of it goes, or all of it goes to Oak Ridge landfill in...
Dorchester? Yep.
Dorchester County. So this was a system that was based on a number of items, the amount of garbage or waste that you generated, the length, municipality had to haul the waste to the landfill. For instance, Mount Pleasant is trucking a waste a lot farther than, say, the City of Charleston is. So, Mount Pleasant got a larger allocation of the percentage of waste they could carry to the transfer station as opposed to bringing it to the landfill. So this, that's kind of how these allocations were made.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So this is kind of a, a story from December through April. The, some of our allocation partners weren't doing a really good job of, of kind of monitoring their allocation on what they were supposed to bring to the landfill versus what...
Disposal sites are, stands for Bees Ferry, obviously?
Yeah, the disposal sites are Bees Ferry landfill, Carolina Waste Transfer Station, and the Republic Transfer Station.
Okay.
And so, on average, on average of these months, I'll just take the first line. So North Charleston holds about 2,512 tons of municipal solid waste. That's how much they collect within the City of North Charleston. And so, the red numbers, let's just take December for, for instance. For Bees Ferry landfill, they were under their allocation by 21.87%, but they were over on their Carolina Waste and the Republic by the same percentage.
That means that North Charleston, in this case, was taking twenty-one, they, they decided they were going to take stuff to the transfer station instead of the Bees Ferry.
That's correct.
Which is a shorter distance.
So the, the, the issue with that that we have is that it costs us more money to go through the transfer station and haul it outside of the county than it is to dispose it at the Bees Ferry landfill.
So, I, I've seen, and I'm, sorry, I'm monopolizing this, y'all jump in if you need to, but, um, so I see the numbers have gotten better, but that's an expensive proposition for us if the North Charleston, Charleston, if these guys are ignoring the allocations and taking them where we're telling them not to, and then we have to, the county pays the difference for the transfer station, why wouldn't we pass that money, that cost on, to the municipalities? If they're going to ignore our allocations, why wouldn't we make them pay the difference?
So that's a policy question that...
Okay, okay.
But I have been, I've been, have been specifically working with North Charleston and Charleston, both using some of my contacts throughout the years and working closely with them to try to get their numbers adjusted.
Mr. SASS.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody, Steve, I'm glad to hear y'all are checking that allocation, because it, it all, it all boils down to how much gets, how much has to go out of here, go to the transfer station, and then go somewhere else, that costs us more money. And it also, if something goes to the transfer station, they don't have to haul the garbage as far to the transfer station as they do if it goes to Bees Ferry. And so, it's only fair that the allocation system be used and it be monitored to make sure everybody's feet are held to the fire so that their, their, the proper percentages are going to the proper places.
Yes, sir, and we, and we do have some exceptions to the, the hauling issues. One of those exceptions would be if we had a large rain and the road to get up on top of the landfill is kind of impassable, we would send more trucks to the transfer station at the county, but that's a, that has to be approved by the director on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
And we try our best to get that road fixed as quickly as we can.
Great. Thank y'all, thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Chairman, I, I, listen, I, I think in principle that makes a ton of sense. I would just, I assume that Carolina Waste is saving us money, given that they have the biggest tonnage, and they're sending more stuff to Bees Ferry and less stuff to the, to the transfer station, but maybe, am I wrong in that, or is it, does that? I just don't want us to create a system that gets rid of whatever savings someone might be inadvertently or purposefully giving us, so, I'm sure that, I, I, listen, I'm sure y'all understand it more than I do, and, and if it nets out to a negative, then it is what it is, and I don't see any reason people should be ignoring their allocations, but I just don't want to have an inadvertent, you know, self-goal on, on, on our, our part.
No, sir, we just, we just want them, they, they all understand what the allocation system is and why it's in place, and we just all want them to live up to the commitments they had made during negotiations.
I guess, am I misreading that, that like, because that, because that is missed, that is reversed as to Carolina Waste, is that, is that a benefit to us?
It is a benefit to us, yes.
Okay, well...
But we, but we still want them to, to keep it close to the, to the allocation because of our goal to reduce the amount of waste going into the landfill.
Okay.
We don't want it to haul everything to Bees Ferry, because that defeats the purpose.
Good point, good point. Listen, I, I'm, I'm cool with it, I, I think the, you know, at least what it sounds like we're vaguely discussing doing at a future time, I, I'm certainly open to it, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it seems like this thing's going both ways a little bit, based on the chart, so, just wanted to flag that for everybody's policy considerations.
I agree with you, Mr. Werman, I think, I guess the challenge to us is, you know, Mr. Thigpen's mentioned he's been working with these municipalities the last two months, and you can see that they've gone down the last two months. So, so he goes away and says, okay, they got it now, and they zip right back up again. So, it shouldn't be his job or Mr. Q's job to have to chase these folks down, they ought, they ought to abide by their allocations. If they don't, I, I don't know why the county would be responsible for that, so, anyway, continue if you have additional.
Yes, sir, that, that completes my portion of this. Ms. Christina Moscos is going to come speak to you about the Recycle Coach app. Yes, sir.
I would be interested, I don't know about the committee, but I'd be interested to know the cost associated with, with these numbers getting out of line, Mr. Thigpen. So for instance, in, in January, in January Charleston, I'm sorry, February Charleston was 29.17 over their allocation. Real charge to Charleston County for that?
We'll work on that and get to, send it to all council.
Because I, I don't think that the county should be paying that, I really don't.
Okay, we'll, we'll run those numbers in for you.
Good evening, hope everyone is doing well, and I appreciate the opportunity to stand in front of y'all and give y'all a quick update about a new app that our department is using called Recycle Coach. So, let's get into it. So what is Recycle Coach? It is an innovative app gain, or aimed at residents reducing their waste and ensuring they're participating in our recycling program correctly. Why did we think an app could help? So, among many other reasons, this stuck out to me as a communications person. We have so many methods of ways that our customers can reach out to us. They can text us, they can call us, they can chat with us through our website, they can send us a carrier pigeon, anything and everything to reach us, and we do respond to everyone. But we liked the way that this app allowed us to use technology to help information flow the other way, and kind of preemptively reach you out, out to our residents with reminders and recommendations and things like that. So, the purpose of this app is really to transform the way that we are communicating to our residents about our recycling program in order to reach our goals of decreased contamination in the recycling stream, increased recycling rates, and of course, conserving that valuable landfill space. I'll give y'all a quick overview of the app, just a bit of information to share how we are moving toward that, the goal that I just mentioned, I'll discuss a few of these in more detail a little bit later. But, again, you know, the real focus here is education and engagement to better connect with our residents. The Recycle Coach app is free to download, there's also a desktop version available. It is a very simple setup process, all you need is a valid Charleston County address. Residents are able to opt-in for reminders of their upcoming recycling day, as well as reminders of community events, and this is a fantastic way for us to engage with our customers. There is also a what goes where tool that I can tell y'all a bit more about later. Education, I'm sure y'all know, education is so important to us in the recycling industry. We want to make sure we're avoiding contamination wherever we can, so there are videos and games created by the Recycle Coach team available in the app, and these are available at all times to our customers whenever they have questions. And then regarding the engagement that I mentioned a second ago, there is a problem reporting tool within the app that residents can use to communicate directly to our customer service staff. So as you can see, this app is really pulling together communication and, communication and education for a better experience for our residents. So let's get into the meat of it, I will share a little bit more in detail with y'all what this app looks like and what it can do. So first, and likely the most helpful for everyone involved, whether it's my staff, our residents, our drivers, are these recycling service day reminders. They allow our customers to know when, where, and how they should be placing their recycling cart at the curb for service. You can see a screenshot here, just kind of alerting when the next scheduled recycling pickup will be, what time the cart needs to be out. So during setup, users of the app can add their address and opt-in for reminders whenever their recycling day is coming up. These reminders can be push notifications, desktop reminders, even email reminders. And just, you know, reaching out to them preemptively has been great for us. The location-based information with the address input is also fantastic for us because we are able to push out timely targeted messages to those users who have opted in. So if we are on a weather delay or a route is running behind because of a truck breakdown, we're able to send a targeted message to that specific neighborhood only without, you know, having to send it out to everyone in the county. Users also receive, very infrequent, we don't want to be annoying, but they do receive kind of educational information from us, things like make sure you're avoiding plastic bags in the recycling cart, as well as reminders about upcoming events. We recently hosted an Earth Day event, and we were pleasantly surprised at how many folks mentioned hearing about the event through the Recycle Coach app. So next, let's look at the, did I go too far? Okay, yes, next, let's look at the education component. So again, we have all these educational tools within the app, so they are available 24/7 to our customers. We are able to monitor the wrong answers that users provide in the quizzes within the app, so that's great for us when we're planning future education campaigns. And there are even different educational tools geared towards specific age groups and kids, so everyone gets to learn, which is fantastic. Let's look at the issue reporting function that is within the app. I should be able to push play and give you guys a little screen recording here. So residents are able to report common issues to our customer service staff directly, so things like a, oh, am I on the, I think I'm on the wrong thing here, sorry, y'all. Here we go. I'm missing that one, well, you'll have to use your imagination. We can get information from our customers when something goes wrong, and we can handle those in real time. It's great for our always busy customer service staff, cuts down on phone calls, which is always fantastic for us. And then again, I mentioned it earlier, but the what goes where tool really helps take the guesswork out of recycling. So this tool has a database of over 15,000 searchable items, so it encourages residents to put waste in its correct place. You can see here a little example, say a resident is trying to dispose of paint. It, all you have to do is type paint into the search tool, it indicates that it should go to one of Charleston County's convenience centers. The information in, within the app links to our website, they can see the rules, the locations, all of that. There's also a photo recognition tool where if you want to find out how to dispose of a certain item but you can't remember the name of it, you can just pop a photo in there and it's searchable from there. So, we've received great feedback from this tool, and again, all in the name of decreasing contamination in the recycling stream and... contamination in the recycling stream and conserving our valuable landfill space. So, as I mentioned before, this software includes a user dashboard that allows our staff to see the success of the app behind the scenes, and also measure the impact of the app on our recycling program. We can run reports, we can see issues. It breaks up, the user dashboard breaks up the different areas within Charleston County, so we can see gaps in our education. It helps us determine which areas might need increased educational tools, and it indicates to us what those educational tools could be. So, you can see here how successful the app has been. After launching in January 2024, we've been active for just about four months, and we have nearly 4,000 users. This data is from a couple weeks ago, so we've increased a little bit from there, and hopefully there are some people in this audience who have increased the numbers a little bit more since we've been sitting here. So, how did we get to those 4,000 users? Once we had the app ready to go in December of 2023, we needed people to use it. So, we created a multimedia advertising campaign. We designed a simple, yet eye-catching ad that conveyed the benefits of the app while also requesting a call to action. We included the QR code because we wanted people to stop what they were doing, scan that QR code, download the app, pop in their address, and, you know, just go from there. We did include print ads, which that main graphic you'll see there ran for about two weeks in a local newspaper. We also relied heavily on digital ads. We liked that those were directly able to click through to the App Store for users to download the app. We also did some traditional advertising. You'll see here in the bottom right-hand of your screen, a billboard. I know that's a terrible photo, but sometimes it's exciting to see your information up on a billboard. We also did some car-to ads, some radio spots, and we even tried some shopping cart ads. And then, in addition to this advertising campaign that we paid through, paid for through our department's budget, we also helped spread the word through some of our own channels. The PIO's office sent out a news release, which resulted in most local news stations running a feature story on the Recycle Coach app. No worries, y'all, this is just a screen grab, I'm not going to show the news story, I'm sure y'all are tired of hearing my voice already, but we also pushed the app through a lot of social media channels. We included information in our annual newsletter, we have information on the county's website, and we also have information on our main phone line. And then lastly, just wanted to share with y'all, it's been about six months since we have been working with the Recycle Coach team, so we are in the process of conducting an assessment, just looking at the app's usability and how successful it's been over the past couple months. We are considering doing another advertising push, potentially some recycling truck wraps in order to increase the number of users that we have on the app, as well as maybe some additional how-to videos to help those residents who aren't as tech savvy. And in the future, we would love to see this Recycle Coach app, you know, bridge more collaboration with various municipalities. Right now, it is only focusing on recycling because that's all we handle, but it has the capability to include other waste collection as well. And that is all the information that I wanted to share with y'all, but I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Questions? Mr. Werman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Moscos. Um, you know, I, I know that there's, it takes a lot of way, you know, everyone kind of interacts with the county in a different way. I, I wonder, you know, sometimes whether we have too many ways to report stuff, but I don't think we can start scaling stuff back unless someone with more expertise in that area tells me we should. But have y'all talked, has this been, gone out to like neighborhood meetings and stuff? I, I seem to have seen a recycling update on a neighborhood meeting agenda in Park Circle recently. I don't know if that's, if that was this, I wasn't able to attend that one, but.
Absolutely. This is the number one thing that we plug anytime we're doing anything public-facing. We're encouraging people to download the app and just kind of talking about all the benefits that there, that are there for our customers.
Very good.
Yeah, we're pushing it on social media, all the things.
Sounds good. You know, I, I like how centralized everything is, and I, you know, I wish we could maybe have one centralized way to have folks get in contact with us, but I, I don't think that's realistic, but I'm glad that we've got another tool in the toolbox that again is a lot more centralized, maybe sort of a all-things-in-one-place type approach. So, I appreciate the work y'all are doing. Thank you.
Sounds like a fantastic app. I can't wait to get on it. I did want to know, though, have you thought about just putting a sticker on all the containers in the county? That has the app code so that people can just go to their container and be like, oh, I can get on the app now?
That's a fantastic idea, and we will certainly consider that. We do have upwards of probably 250,000 carts out there, so it might be quite the undertaking, but I, I love that idea.
Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Thigpen?
No.
Okay. Mr. SASS, that concludes our environmental management meeting.
Right, sir. How about Public Works?
Man, give me a break, man.
Mr. Chair, we'll go over to minutes.
Let me get over there, Mr. Pryor. Public Works, all committee, all members are on the committee. Mr. Pryor has moved for, for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boykin. Any questions, comments, changes? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item 2A, 2B, yes, yes, sir, Mr. Pryor.
Move for approval on 2A and B with the right to amend up a third reading.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Boykin, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying, oh, Mr. Kibrowski.
No, no, I was, I might wave, saying aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You sure? All right.
I will weigh in. I have serious concerns about waiting to amend up to third reading now, but I'm going to go with this for this time.
By saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. That concludes our meeting. Mr. SASS?
Okay, I will reconvene the Finance Committee. Approval of minutes of May 2nd.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Ms. Honeycutt. Any additions, deletions, questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Item number two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it. Thank you. Item number three, consent agenda.
Move for approval, A through E.
Second. Question on 3E. Mr. Pryor has a motion on the floor for to move A through, A through E. Is there a second?
Second.
There was.
There was a second. Okay, it was moved and seconded to approve A through E. We can certainly discuss number E. Mr. Kibrowski?
Thank you. I just, I didn't know what anticipated lapsed personnel costs meant, and how did that result in an increase in personnel costs of almost three-quarter of a million dollars? I didn't know what that meant. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Maybe, Mr. Kibrowski, this all started when we approved these new libraries and the renovation, and so we knew these were coming. These were delayed, and so we knew these salaries were coming, so that's why you see the increase.
Again, thank you. I just didn't understand what the words meant.
Delayed increase. Thank you.
So, for lapsed personnel costs means?
Mr. Kibrowski, instead of budgeting 100% for salaries, we assume that they are not going to have 100% of their staff filled for the whole year, and we make an estimate. We estimated it was going to be closer to 5%, I think was the estimate, and they ended up around 2%. So, in effect, that actually makes them need to increase their budget because they didn't save as much as was originally estimated.
Lapsed personnel cost doesn't mean less personnel. Okay, that's just my wrongful interpretation, so I apologize.
You may call it personnel savings, and there's a difference between what we budgeted for personnel savings and what they are projected to have.
So, in other words, in layman's terms, they had, there wasn't the cost savings, and they needed more employees, and we have to pay for it now. Is that what you're saying? There wasn't less employees, there's more employees than they anticipated?
Yes, sir.
Is that?
We have been very successful with our hiring and retention. We were anticipating having a higher rate of vacancy, I think at about 5%, but we're actually at about 3% per year, maybe 2, 2.7, meaning that we are hiring and retaining people at a rate that we weren't anticipating. We are asking for a budget adjustment. This is no cost to county, we are just using fund balance to cover that personnel cost.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Craig. Appreciate that. Okay, moved and seconded for 3A through E. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Item number five, ARPA initiatives.
Move for approval, second.
Move by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Moody. That was for 5A through?
C.
Through C. Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Move for approval, 6A and B.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Pryor, seconded by Mr. Boykin, 6A and B.
Can we just discuss 6A?
Absolutely, we can. Mr. Dykes is here.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Item 6A, financial incentives for Project Stripe. This is a, a package that I'm bringing you tonight that involves $6.3 million capital investment to construct three different buildings, one of which will be occupied by a manufacturer. We've got a code name in force on the manufacturer for the moment, but they will reveal their identity in short order. But the, you know, the overall capital investment, 6.3 million, it creates about almost 40,000 square feet of new building space for economic development, and the manufacturer will create 84 jobs in the process, and those jobs will pay about 44,000 per year. So, that's a $3.7 million annual payroll. What I offered the developer and the company as part of a tri-party fee-in-lud deal is just a vanilla, what I would call, characterizes a vanilla 6% fee-in-lud deal over 20 years, and the feature of that is that the millage is fixed. Assessment ratio is at 6%, millage is fixed at its current rate throughout the 20 years.
What would it be if we didn't fix it at that?
If you didn't, if you didn't do that, the building would, would still be treated at 6% unless occupied by a manufacturer. And so vacant, vacant commercial buildings travel at 6% assessment.
Right.
When they're occupied by a manufacturer, they're, they're, for that duration, they're at 10 and 1/2%. So, it's, 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 it makes it really pretty difficult to understand what the full, long-term impact would be. But we began the practice of doing deals like this about eight years ago in response to shortage of industrial product that was out there. And this is, this is a program, I think, has been pretty successful in creating so far about 4.4 million square feet of space out there that we then can attract companies with.
I have great admiration for you personally, and the job you do, and the brilliance you bring, and everything, and, but have we done another one where we didn't reveal the identity of? I don't remember that. In my term, maybe we did, I don't remember one.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. It's, it's, it's a fairly common practice that I bring things into you with a code name, and it's, it's because decisions are being made, and there are timing elements such that companies are looking for us to take the steps, first initial steps toward approval before their boards will go ahead and bless the revelation of the name. In many cases, they're publicly traded companies that need to sit on that information, you know, until a later date.
I have, thank you, and I have no problem with the reason why you're doing it, but it's giving public money and giving such as an imminent tax break, I couldn't support something where we don't reveal because it's a public body and it's public money, so that would be reason why, with no disrespect to you and the reasons you're doing it, I couldn't support that. Thank you.
I can respect what you're saying. I will tell you that it, it, it is mandatory that they reveal their identity, but in this case, you know, they, they have up until public hearing, their, their name actually gets revealed through a public hearing notice in the paper when they reach that stage. So, some companies just choose to, you know, keep their identity under the radar until that time, but this, this will be announced.
Thank you, Steve. Any further questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dykes? Hearing none.
If he wants to vote differently?
Let's do that. Let's, let's vote on 6A.
If Mr. Pryor will accept.
Yeah, we just, yeah.
Let's vote on 6A, and then we'll, we'll have Mr. Williams' presentation and vote on 6B.
Well, do we need a presentation on 6B?
He's got one for us.
Need one? I've already seen some of this stuff. I mean, if council is comfortable with voting on it, I'd ask for the rest of council.
All right, let's vote on 6A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Move for approval on 6B.
Second.
Moved and seconded for 6B. We, we also have, we also have a presentation on capital improvement plan as well.
You got some item seven.
Okay, well, let's vote on 6B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
John and I are happy to present just a quick summary of some of the projects that Max is going to talk about on the CIP plan, just so it makes more sense when we see the spreadsheet. Just as a quick overview of our three campuses, starting off with the administrative campus, of course, we've got the, the PSB and Perimeter Center and Coroner's Facility, and then more recently, the, the Public Libraries Headquarters and Support Center, and the new Board of Elections Voter Registration Headquarters that they are currently occupying. The dash line in there shows just a, a property, a parcel that we're keeping our eye on as a potential opportunity in the future for expansion. And then for our corrections campus, all of the existing buildings there that everybody's familiar with, but we also have shown on there the new Biological Science Center and also just a hashed-out area that is also an area that we're keeping an eye on and assessing for potential expansion in the future. And then our Azealia complex that we're currently building out, of course, the law enforcement center and the fleet administration are staying put. We're wrapping up and coming to a close on the new fuel depot and the entrance to Dorchester Road, and good ways into Azealia Phase 2, and preparing for Azealia Phase 3 and 4. So, that way, the final master plan will be in accordance with what we briefed before. No change.
Are there any questions?
We're going to flip, quickly flip through each project, if that's okay.
Pardon me?
We're going to flip through a few projects, if that's okay, first?
Yes, sir.
The Azealia Phase 2, we're estimating a completion in fourth quarter. Phase 4 is going to be the EMS project, designed to start fourth quarter of this year, moving into construction first quarter of '26. That's on the Azealia Drive, or side of the campus. And then, of course, the, the Biological Science Center will be starting construction on that one in June of this year with fourth quarter of '25 completion.
Thanks, John. Of course, already mentioned, Azealia Fuel Depot currently on progress to complete in August. We've got the, the pumps and the, the stations in place. We're putting in a transformer to power them up so that we can test them, certify them, and get them ready for use. There will be an overlap in the use of the old pumps and the new ones, just to make sure that they're up and running, so we don't leave ourselves hanging. EMS station broke ground in March, and they are underway, about 10% complete to date, and due to be complete, substantially complete in April of next year with a move-in of next summer for EMS. The Public Works Maintenance Facilities is also underway, about 75% complete. They are due to be completed in August as well. That number on there, the 8.5, is actually the price for all three facilities in James Island, Ravenel, and Johns Island, not just one. For the fleet expansion, the purpose of this project is to give a little bit more base space to fleet for the expansion of the EMS fleet that they've experienced over the last decade. So, with, with the new EMS trucks, they need more space inside in order to do work on them. Currently, they're working on the outside of the facility because there's not enough room in the base anymore. This project is in preparation for moving probation and parole and pardon services[1761.38] This project is in preparation for moving probation and parole and pardon services out of the Perimeter Center and into this Fremont Road building. Currently, that facility is unoccupied, it's vacant. We've gone ahead and demolished the interior and grayboxed it and gotten it ready. We have the plans already prepared, and so as soon as the funding comes down, then we can commence construction and the outfit of that. The goal for that is to get probation and parole out of the Perimeter Center by November, December of this year. This project is a collaboration with St. Andrews PSD. They actually approached us about it, but it actually is for mutual benefit in that EMS has been trying to expand services within that area for a long time, and so this allows them to do that for a reduced cost, given that we're sharing the facility with them. We have about 33, exactly 33% of the, of the cost and of the actual square footage of the facility. That is due to begin this August. We are not managing that construction, it's being done by St. Andrews, but they are due to be complete within 12 months, so we're expecting to be moving in by August of next year. Another collaboration project is with St. John's Fire on a QO River. This was initially brought to us by QO River to make sure that there was a dedicated parcel for emergency services. Working together with St. John's Fire, we came up with a concept that they agreed with and also that QO River liked to see. So with all parties, all stakeholders in agreement, we went forward, and St. John's is, has hired a construction manager to manage their project, and they're going to go into designing and constructing their portion of it. The dollar amounts that you see up there, the 900,000, 25, and 26, are our estimates of what our percentage of the site design and site costs are going to be as we contribute to that project. And then in FY '27, the 4.7 will be the construction of the EMS facility separate from the rest of the site costs. Recently, just this month, we had a request from, from Channel Two. They are planning on putting in a new tower. Due to the fact that we need it to be higher than they originally wanted to build it, they asked for us to contribute additional funding to make the, make the tower higher. And so that's what that dollar figure represents, the, the difference in what they were going to pay for a shorter tower versus the proper-sized tower that we need. The purpose of that is to ensure that we have the correct height to maintain our emergency communications for that area and across the county. This project is for the assessor to move into the Perimeter Center. This is the design that we've come up with to date. The timeline for that is once the probation and parole moves out of the Perimeter Center, then we can start renovation in this facility. And so starting construction at the end of this year and then completing at the end of, of 2025. The goal is to be complete with that renovation so that the assessor can choose to move when they would like to into the, the new calendar year of 2026, just after a critical time in their, in their schedule. For the Election Headquarters Facility, we're just finishing up some punch list items for, for the Board of Elections in that facility, and then we're also looking at a potential purchase of the building to, you know, so that we're not leasing it from the landowner. And so that would be in FY '26. That's timed with the end of their current lease. So when their lease ends up, that's when that purchase will occur. And then finally, the, the Navy, the Old Navy Base, before it was occupied by the Coast Guard, had plenty of room to offer to the Sheriff's Office Marine Patrol to park their boats, and since the Coast Guard has moved in, unfortunately, their new mission does not allow them to accommodate the Sheriff's Office anymore. And so this allows us, by putting these new docks in at an alternate location, allows them to move out and give back that area back to the Coast Guard. And then for our library referendum, we've got all five new libraries built, all five regional libraries renovated, and five of the seven branches renovated. The last two, Edisto and Poe Library, are due to be complete in this fall. They've just, they're just starting now, but we've got our ribbon-cutting ceremonies for McClellanville and for Folly coming up in a few days. And then here's our, our progress on that, and what this shows is we are prepared. We've just finished hiring, or going out to, on the street for a designer for the design, the programming and design of the main library. Of course, this last project is going to be dependent upon the amount of funding that we have left for that, which is approximately $9 million. And so that's going to be, that's going to dictate what the scope of that renovation looks like. Depending on your questions, I'm going to hand over to, yeah.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back on the Board of Elections building.
Yes, sir.
Remind me how much we've, or if you, if you don't know off the top of your head, that's fine, how much we've spent on those renovations? Ballpark?
I don't have the, the figure off the top of my head. I'll get that to you, though.
And the lease is through, you said through '26?
Correct.
Also built into the lease, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was an agreed-upon purchase price, I think, that we were, we were not going to have to, oh, there's my fellow real estate trainee.
So the, in the lease agreement, what we agreed to is to lease for three years and purchase at the end of that, have the option to purchase at the end of the three years for no less than what the appraised value was when we leased it. So we got the appraised value.
That's what I was.
So what we'll do is probably get an appraisal again, close to the end of the three years, and we'll negotiate from there.
Wait, wait, wait. I thought this was based on the appraised value when we went into the building.
It's no less than.
Okay. So my fear always was that we would go in there and make a bunch of improvements to the property, that the landlord would benefit by the appreciation of the value, but because of the leasehold improvements that we made to it.
Right. And so my intention when we go into this is to, and we, I've already talked to the appraiser about this that we use, is to make sure that when we do get the appraised value, we get the appraised value less the value of the improvements that we make into it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Off that one question.
Wait, Mr. Truman, I've got.
So, Ms. Honeycutt?
I'm sorry, I need to go back to 6A because I thought we were going to get some attention to that, and I just want to make sure council adopted 6A. John got skipped over, sorry. When you're on presentation night, the best presentations that everybody already knows about and has studied usually get skipped over, but I want to make sure council is aware, this is a $29 million project for our new Biological Services Center. Tom's here. Incredible program, incredible team, but most importantly, wanted to point out in our action items that we are accepting a capital contribution from the state of $2 million and a capital contribution from the Federal Appropriations Act for $7 million. That is $9 million this team went and found to help with this project. So, well done. We also have in there on item one, this is a GMP of, of project, and so we, we will not have to see any additional, any dollars on this. So well done on really looking for what we need, doing all of the research so that we didn't have to come back and ask for more, and, and really scaling this appropriately. Thank you so much, team.
Thank you. Good job. Carl? Good job, John.
Okay, so this summarizes the, the slides that were previously gone over and slots them into fiscal years so that we can figure out on the revenue side how we're going to fund those projects. We do have existing bonds that are paying for some of these. We have some funds that we've already have on hand from interest income and transfers from the general fund and, and sales of property. Going from '25 on, we have some more sales of property anticipated. We think that those numbers are conservative based on what's in our inventory, but we would like to leave them that way until we realize the, the actual revenue. We do have two borrowings, one planned for November of '24, and then another one in November of '26. As part of the recommendation tonight, we're asking you to appropriate a little under $30 million to get several of the projects moving at this point before the borrowing. The debt management plan summarizes our existing debt as well as this new debt, based on a borrowing in November and, again, in another couple of years. We have sufficient millage in our debt service fund to afford the repayment of those bonds without having to raise the millage. The action requested of council is to approve these two plans and also to appropriate the funds for the projects listed there with the reservation of allowing reimbursement from a future bond, which will be that bond in November of '24.
Move for staff recommendation.
Second. Move on the 30, seconded by Mr. Pryor. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Great report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It was.
7A, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it was $610,000.
Was the cost of the outfits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it?
Yes, sir.
Well, good. I didn't know if any action was needed on 7A. I don't think so, but just to, the agenda said request to approve, so I wasn't sure.
It was one of those items on Mac's last slide.
Okay.
Number one is 7A.
Oh, got you. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, we, so we finished 7A and 7B.